The other one for the surface water mitigation. Two sixty four to two sixty five. They're gonna do your first and then a three year old.
Okay, well. We are here. Absolutely. Okay, well, welcome everybody to the city councils work session for May fifteenth. We have engineering, planning and development downtown building authority starting off with director Cobb. Page one sixty six. Do you have a question, Dr. Aldrich?
I was just going to ask if Tom can be sure to talk into the mic because it's really, the sound is not great unless he does. Thank you.
All right. Fully noted.
Okay. So I guess good afternoon, members of the council, President Escabel. I'm gonna do my little, my annual two thousand twenty five proposed budget. I guess I'd like to start off by saying apologies to Robin. I have a photo that I put in, I wish I didn't know when you were gonna use the same photo and I didn't notice until I looked at the budget book. But I got a little more detailed photo in this one. I should have known that, but I am sorry. I've taken several of these, so if you ever want to use these, I've got drone fetish from just about the entire city. So I have a great GIS department that does that, so holler at me next time. So I'd like to do a little bit again, I'd like to overview a little bit of the division overview. I've kind of done some reorganization, so I kind of just wanted to highlight some of those changes. Then I want to go through the significant budget changes that you're outlining in your book, a little bit of the detailed budget line items if you'd like to. And then, which I always is my part that you, that you all really like to see is kind of a summary of our summer twenty twenty five capital and maintenance program. And then if you have any questions of me after that or during, it's your choice. Division overview, thanks Jennifer, third one. So I'd like to just start out by saying, you know, I have four primary objectives in our department. And the first and foremost, and one of the most important, obviously, is hold paramount the community safety within the flood plains drainage areas and roadways within our city. Second one is the protection, preservation and maintenance of all of our road right away assets. And then we oversee the programming, planning, design and review of all new right away and, and obviously drainage assets. And last but not least, I take this responsibility not very lightly at all. It's very important to me as the steward of taxpayers' dollars and we want to be fiscally responsible with those dollars. So my division's primarily composed of four different components, the one percent construction division, the GIS division, really the city traffic engineer. And then what I consider the engineering division itself, one percent really is responsible for all of the inspections of all the new developments. The dry and wet utilities, again, all the private developments. And then they also oversee primarily all the payment asset review and project management of those projects. The GIS division does all of our asset management, they keep track of everything that we do do, all the stuff that, all the projects that we complete. All, all of the assets within the right away. And I've used the intern program over the last three years that you've all budgeted for me to be able to collect more and more of that data. So we have very accurate data of what assets that we do have. And they really are the keeper of all that, all the plats, et cetera. And then with the city traffic engineer, obviously, that's, it's self explanatory. And then the engineering division, I break it into three components. I call it the project development program, the city surveyor, and then the city drainage engineer. Those components under project development program include development and engineering plan review, the community concerns. Right now, one of the interns that I, that I keep full time now, or she's part time, full time, is she then collects all of that data and logs all of our concerns. So now we have a very good record of everyone that's, that's ever, we've ever, every complaint that we have received and how it's addressed. So that, that's one of the things that's been helping us move forward with that and keeping track of it. And then the summer intern program, which has been very successful, as I mentioned before, I'm asking for that again with a little bit of an increase, which you'll see in a moment. But they do do an excellent job of, of helping us define our assets, what we have. And then also it gives them experience both in the field and a little bit of stuff with some development review as well, just to kind of expose them to some different things. And then, of course, the capital improvement management program itself, we do have a capital project. We, we do have project managers that manage all of that. With the city drainage engineer, there's two primary components, it's the drainage and flood plain management. And then basically the stormwater maintenance, and I call it the major maintenance. Obviously, Vicki and public works do their day to day and stuff during the summer with them, with the minor maintenance. These, these projects then would be stuff for like the dredging or, or any rehab that we need to do and when we can, when we can fund those. Next one, please, thanks Jennifer. So strategic goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty five, overall, I just want to continue to provide comprehensive transparent oversight and assistance in the planning, program, design and construction and operation, maintenance and repair of those city facilities within the public right of way. And the easements and to preserve the needs and meet the future needs and goals of the city. And again, it's a big mouthful of a sentence structure, but it's, it's really important that we do manage and keep it, keep all our assets, both the new and the old ones in, in functioning condition. So other we support, we, I'm looking at supporting and implementing and enhancing the installation of our new cardiograph right away asset program that, that you all have helped us purchase. We haven't implemented that yet, but again, all the interim program that's been working this work from our side, we're trying to collect all that data and make that program viable. And then, of course, operate within the open gov system, we've implemented some of that already in, in our reviews, but we haven't, obviously, we haven't gone fully to open gov. And then last, there's a couple more, the unified development goat, I'd really like to focus this year on really evaluating and identify enhancements to article three. And for those of you who don't know, that's really the impact studies directly related to drainage and traffic. We do need to update the codes on both of those, so we, we have a consultant on board that's been working on the drainage component. The traffic one we haven't done so far, and I'm, I'm hoping now that Rick Aiman, the city traffic engineer, will be able to help deal with that next year to try to implement. And maybe, I guess, update that part of the, of that article. And I didn't list it on this one, but obviously, we also would still, as the goal for this year is to implement a new stormwater division to help manage our stormwater facilities and maintenance, because obviously, as you've heard me say before, in the workshop that I had, we are very underfunded to be able to maintain those facilities. Next one, please Jennifer. So significant budget changes for twenty twenty five, and I apologize, this is a long list and we'll just go by them piece by piece. These are listed in, in your book. The overall engineering division has increased about three hundred and ninety one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars from fiscal year twenty four to twenty five. That includes a new staff engineer's position at seventy two thousand dollars plus an estimated forty four, three twenty three in benefits. And this position is, is, it's to increase productivity to help the community service and reduce staff time. And really help manage all the projects that we've been currently having in the future ones that we're looking at. I'd also like to reopen the deputy city engineers position, as you saw from the memo to me, I eliminated or vacated that position this year and, and fulfilled it now with what I considered an engineering manager, it's sort of in between. And that would be an increase of approximately ten thousand eight hundred and twenty five dollars and plus two thousand six hundred and eighty six in benefits to obviously increase market competitiveness. I also am looking at raising the chief GIS coordinator up about fourteen hundred and ninety five dollars plus benefits just to meet the market survey analysis from twenty twenty four. Next slide, please. The other one is to increase the budget thirty one thousand two hundred and the temporary part time budget for, for those part time interns. And also in addition to that, which is the line after that is another seven thousand two hundred and forty dollars for that temporary part time budget for the cost of living increases that came apart for, that would be for the city surveyor, that's also included in that, he is temporary part time and, and the interns themselves. The third one down, about forty five hundred dollar increase for professional development. And that would be for our continuing education expenses for an additional two staff engineers plus myself and engineering manager and the city drainage engineer as well as the city traffic engineer. And then last on this page is a one time increase of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is for, and, and a very important component to fulfill my, the US Department of Justice required ADA accessibility right away transition plan. We, we don't have one in place right now, what I have right now is basically an outline and, and we do need a full plan to fulfill the requirements of the Department of Justice. Next slide, please. In addition, I also am asking for computer software and maintenance expenses of about twenty, of twenty one thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. This is obviously, everybody's costs are going up. Primarily, this is for our Esere software, which is the GIS software itself. Basically, our department, it's, it's, it's just becoming more and more expensive every year. We sign those contracts for a three year period and they go up, it's, there's built increases in that already. And then our AutoCAD Civil three D, our licenses are up this year, they're three year subscriptions and that would cover that cost as well for another three years. Next one down, I also have asked for a twenty thousand dollar increase in small equipment. And this is to cover the replacement of fifteen year old tremble survey equipment that we've had here. Yeah, fifteen years, it's, it's becoming outdated. And at this point, trying to maintain it is becoming more expensive than actually just purchasing new equipment. It's going down right now about every month, Jack is having issues with it, it simply needs to be replaced. This also includes some conference room upgrades in two oh eights to be able to, we, we did make some, some, I guess, some purchases in that, in that particular conference room, everyone uses it, but it's gonna cost us a little bit to get a system, it's a little bit simpler for everyone to use. So this, we've, we looked at a company coming in to, it's just a single panel, so anyone can use it. As Charles can attest, it's a little difficult to use, so that's what that is for as well. And then also to purchase two new laptop computers based on our computer replacement plan. Our, our computers are a little bit different than the rest of the city. We do run pretty, pretty, I guess, high powered machines, both AutoCAD Civil three D and, and our GIS program. And last, the fuel, fuel, the fleet fuel and labor parts is actually decreased, this is by eight hundred dollars. So that was based on historical data, so I guess that's the summary of the significant changes. And next slide, please. This is a little bit more of the detailed and the general fund budget for the division eighteen oh one, which is engineering, sorry, go to the next one, sorry Jennifer. If you have any particular questions of this one, this is where it's one sixty six to one sixty eight. I don't have anything unless you, unless you have any questions of me there. It just summarizes it into the categories. Next slide, please. And then briefly, I'd just like to cover the surface water mitigation funding and point out that this is unfunded, it was in the budget last year. Just, it really is basically the same, it's basically six time full time equivalents, two of which would go to public works and the full remaining, it would remain under the engineering division itself. The proposed budget did go up slightly, and I believe this was related to basically the, the cost of living increases. It was an adjustment from fiscal year twenty four. And again, right now, this is unfunded, but it does, its purpose is to meet the city council goal of a self funded stormwater division for increased safety. Programming of those major and minor maintenance components of the stormwater and monitoring those existing MS four permits and conveyance and retention and detention facilities. And then probably the, this is the part that you, I get a lot of questions about a lot, I just kind of wanted to summarize what we have going for the summer construction and maintenance of twenty twenty four. Basically, right now, we have five of the nine projects out for bid and contracted to date, so all the major ones have basically gone out. With the exception of the Dell range concrete repair and in preparation of an overlay in twenty twenty five, this is pretty significant. So we've got city overlay number, number one that we came out and it, we're roughly at two point two million. And that's the second column, if you look down on the screen, Millen overlay number two came in at about one point five million. Then we have two patch and surface seals, one point seven and two million itself. And that covers, as the mayor has indicated, we, we, in, 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 I guess, in presentations that he's done, this is, covers about sixty miles of streets. I don't have the full list, I can probably pull it out for you, but that covers everything that we've done crack seals previously in the last two years. And then we've got a, we're also gonna come out with our miscellaneous crack seal project, we budgeted about six hundred thousand for that, that'll come out in the next month. We did look at also then, as I indicated, we're looking at the, at the Dell range concrete repair for, for our overlay in twenty twenty five. And again, that's gonna basically start at marble and work all the way to sunset. So this is a significant one, you're roughly gonna be about three million dollars in concrete repairs and then following it up in the next year with a full overlay of Dell range itself. And then we're also looking at the epoxy and thermal project. It's been a while since this has been updated, one of the great things that, and thank you for funding the city traffic engineers position is he's able now to work on the, some of these components. So this epoxy and overlay project, it's roughly encompasses about five hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. And so far out of the five and nine projects, this is the good news, I'm about a million under the projected budget so far, I hope that trend continues, but we'll, we'll, we'll remain to be seen. Next, next slide, please. So follow up, this is the capital construction component, we've got it, six of the fourteen projects are out to bid or contracted, I've got eight remaining. Right now, on this side for the capital construction, about eight hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars over budget. One of the large projects that's still been delayed is what we, the Story Boulevard extension, and the reason that's been delayed, this again is gonna go from Whitney Road to college. I need to get an agreement in place with the county, which is taking a little bit longer than what I had hoped, because they have one component of this. And then we also have to do some, I guess, some coordination with the adjacent landowners that, that are, that are along that section as well. Down the list, this, on this list for this year is the College Drive Regional Detention Pond. I'm, I'm just gonna call it what it is, it's, it is the Thomas Heights component. That now, that, that project did come in, it, and it's ninety percent, I just got the ninety percent set, sent my comments back to the consultant last week. So we expect to go out to bid here in the next month. Airport Parkway is out now, as you see, it's under construction, that came in just slightly underbid at about three point six million. We've got the Powderhouse Road and Carlson intersection improvements, which includes the new signal next to Coyote Ridge. That project was budgeted for about five hundred thousand, it came in at about one point two million. Pedestrian safety enhancements on Western Hills Boulevard and Pershing Boulevard, better known as the Hock system. That came in slightly underbid, we had budgeted about eight hundred thousand, came in at seven hundred and fifty five, seven fifty two. And the Van Buren Storm Sewer Interceptor project, obviously, this is a big component, this ties all Whitney Ranch together and all the drainage from Dell Range, I didn't point out that picture when we went by it a few minutes ago. But I actually had photos of last summer of some of the, some of the rainwater that was coming out of that subdivision and basically overtopping Dell Range and downstream, the more importantly, that, that we were gonna prevent some of the rural neighborhoods that, that were getting the water last year, that's gonna be eliminated completely. That project came in at about nine point three million. And just slightly over budget, we had budgeted about nine point two. I'm also looking at the Vanda High pedestrian rehabilitation, this project has been, it was based on, it was brought in front of the council as a resolution. Jason had started with it. What was thought to be about a thirty thousand dollar project is about a hundred and forty thousand is what we're currently looking at. It'll, it'll probably come in front of you pretty soon. We are, it says April here, but they, they just got the comments back from us. We'll have that bid package ready and should be advertised here within the month. Story Boulevard extension is the one I told you was delayed, we're projecting about one point seven million. And then we've got the Belvoir Ranch Trailhead and Trailhead Phase One. Those two projects are, one is in front of you at Finance Committee next week. That would be the first trails phase, roughly at about two hundred and fifty thousand. And then, as I said, the, the second component is the trailhead itself, which is encompassing a restroom facility, a parking lot, some roadway improvements. And this is really what's gonna gain access to the Belvoir itself. And we're expecting around six hundred and eight thousand dollars for that, and it's gotta, it'll be out next month. We're also doing the VA cemetery road improvements, that is actually advertised now, it'll be bid next month, I believe it's June third. So we, it, we'll, you'll see that shortly as well. Paul Smith Way Construction, we just opened those bids. We had budgeted approximately one point two million, looks like it came in at about one point six seven six. This is a project that we did move forward with, that the developer had some issues and we're building a new gymnastics facility. So I, I asked the mayor if we could move forward with this project and then ask for reimbursement as that area develops, so that's what we're looking at for that. We were also looking at the I eighty, I one eighty pedestrian overpass lighting project, and this also is gonna repair some, some lighting that was on Norris Viduct. With that, that's out to bid as well, we haven't opened those bids yet, and, but we're expecting about a hundred and twenty five thousand. And then the US thirty project, which currently is under construction with wide out, our portion of that, which encompasses three different funding sources. Six Penny Christensen has a part of it, they did some widening for us and some lighting. The Greenway project or the Greenway, Six Penny is also involved with the underpass, and then there's some roadway improvements that we paid out of Fifth Penny. And those two totals, a little over one, about one point four million, and that agreement already came in front of you, but just kind of wanted to update you on that one. And I've got a couple more here, I'm, I'm also looking at the radar feedback sign installations going in, in one of each of the wards, at least to start with. And that should, we're gonna have that out next month, and then we expect that at about seventy thousand dollars. Next slide, please Jennifer, last one, sorry to keep going, drainage and maintenance projects this year, we, we are doing a small vegetation management. We're doing this similar to what we did last year, we set a price. And then they give us basically how many goats for how many days, and so we set it at seventy thousand this year. So you won't see the contract really come in front of you, it'll just be a direct sign by the mayor. But, but we did, we are gonna do some of that this year as well. And then we are looking for the dredging project to come out, we're still waiting for clearance from the Corps of Engineers. There is, this is still in litigation. And so I think we may have to simplify this and not do the main components of the drainage, just some of the side ones, so that it won't, it doesn't have to be cleared by the Corps for wetlands, and at least we can do some maintenance this year. But this has been ongoing for the last two years, it's been stuck in the courts. And with that, I, I think that's about all I've got. I just, I guess I did overall one last one, just to see where the budget is, sorry Jennifer. We, we projected this year total budget of about thirty five point three million, and right now, we've actually let about twenty five point one. And we're a hundred and thirty three thousand under budget total of, of the projects we've let to date. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Okay. Yep, let's start with Councilman Johnson.
Tom, just so Charles has a chance to speak, can you email me the PowerPoint presentation? Cause I have a lot of questions on this, so can I just email them to you just because of how short our timeframe is?
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. She's already got the, it's.
Okay, we'll go online. Dr. Aldrich.
President Escabel, through you, I just wanted to, first and foremost, say thank you, Tom, I always appreciate your quick responses and your diligence in following through on road maintenance, which is one of the things we hear the most about as council people. But I did have a question about. You said that Thomas Heights is scheduled to go out to bid next month, the drainage that you've been working on there. Are we hoping to still be able to meet our deadlines on, that we had agreed to on that agreement?
President Escabel, through, through you to Dr. Aldrich, yes ma'am, we, we, the only delay that occurred and they had written into the agreement was getting through the county process and the state process, so we're diligently working forward and are gonna meet those obligations.
Okay, and then the last question I had was, and I know I ask you about this every year, but is there any hope for the Henderson drainage to be dredged or worked on this summer?
Sorry, Mr. Escabel, through you to Dr. Aldrich. We, we are set, we are trying, Dr. Aldrich, that, that's one of the ones that I talked about are some of the subdrange, because I don't have to clear that one to the core. So I did shift the consultant to go ahead and start putting that one forward. So I'm hoping that would be one of the ones that we do here in the fall. And again, you won't see that till the fall, because it makes the most sense to do it then now, because there, there's just less water in the channel and easier for them to dredge.
Thank you.
Councilman White.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Tom, I've got a few questions as well, I'll wait to get the presentation and ask those to you in person, but the, there was one question I did have with regards to the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the US Department of Justice required ADA right away transition plan. How do we not have one in place? I thought that was required from, from a federal standpoint for most communities that receive federal grant funds, so you, you had indicated that we don't have one. Have we, have we had one in the past, and if so, how long has it been since it was updated?
President Escabel, through, through you to Councilman White, so, and I, I may have misspoke when I said this. What I said, what I have now is, I don't have a complete one, what I have is an overview of what we have. I've, I've got it basically drafted in a memo which covers sort of the, the requirement, but it's not as thorough as it should be. So this is the fund of fully transition plan, so that it's, it's laid out in a format that it's required by the DOJ. But again, we do have it in place, it's just not as formal as what it should be, it's, it's in memo format.
Great, well, thanks for the clarification and that's very important. I completely support it because the Department of Justice generally is not very patient for communities that, that don't maintain those, those sorts of plans. So I appreciate the efforts and I'll talk with you offline about some of the other questions I had in the interest of time, thanks.
Councilman Cook, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom, like Mr. White and Mr. Johnson, first of all, great presentation, I'm just really, just very impressed how you're able to keep all those balls in the air, so to speak, with all those various large projects. So thank you for your diligence and I know you and your staff do try to, try to do the best you can, so. But I do have multiple questions for you on, on, on some of those projects, so again, in the interest of time, I'll if you're okay with it, Mr. Cobb, I will email you offline with those questions and comments I have. But again, just thank you, I really appreciate your first class presentation.
Councilman Mayborn.
Well, Tom, you rebuilt the engineering department and getting the results that I've certainly never seen before. And a lot of support from everyone here, which I think you deserve. And I certainly appreciate the open door policy of your office and the time you spend helping us understand things. And I know that there are other elements here that weren't even in your report that you're working on. So thank you and thank your staff.
Councilman Escobal, through you. Thank you all. I appreciate it. Appreciate the, the, I guess, the thoughts, and I, I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Hey, I think really the only question I had was in the, you don't have a deputy direct or deputy city engineer no more. You're replacing that with an operations manager?
Sorry, Mr. Escobal, I, what I'm trying to do is then re-implement the deputy's position. What I've done is split the duties up, so I really don't, I don't have an active deputy right now. It's vacant. I, I moved Mr. Bay to the city drainage engineer's position. And I basically moved Cassie into an engineering manager's position, which is just with less responsibility than, than what the deputy would have. But I'd, I'd like to fulfill that in this year if I can.
Okay, and on the dredging, was it at the workshop the other day, was it the urban forestry? Is that who they mentioned about helping with remove some of the trees that are in our waterways?
Councilman Escobal, yes, sir. And that's, that's what we, we'd hope to have their help as well as when we can. But some of that, those trees are so large that do need to be removed, that we do need to contract a lot of that work to do that.
Okay, well, I don't have anything else. Let's go on to planning and development and Director Bloom. Let us know what page you're working on there.
Chair members of the committee, good afternoon. We are on page one seventy two of the document. I apologize. I do not have a fancy PowerPoint like Tom. He always upstages me every year lately with his PowerPoint. So I guess if Mr. Cook calls it a first-class presentation, you're about to get a second-class presentation. So thank you very much. Regarding the budget for the Planning and Development Department, it is pretty much remaining the same. We do have an overall reduction of just under nine thousand dollars between the fiscal year twenty four budget and the two thousand and twenty five budget. I'm going to quickly go through a couple of the highlights. The professional development, that line item has increased by ten thousand dollars. That brings it to a total of fifteen thousand dollars. And what that allows for is for staff training and staff certification. Presently, we have seventeen point five staff members in the department, nine of which actually pull from this fund for training. So we're trying to approach an industry standard of about two thousand dollars per person for training. This could be for ten some conferences that are locally or regionally to help continue and further their education and to obtain necessary credits for certification of their professional certifications. We are also increasing our local meeting budget just by five hundred dollars. And that is to continue with an initiative that the Planning Development Department is working on with the Public Information Officer for additional community outreach. If you may have not noticed, but there is a community open house that is occurring this evening at the library, which is a partnership between the DDA, the MPO, and the Planning Office. And it is actually tomorrow. Sorry, it is tomorrow. I forgot what day it is. It's, it's all running together this week. It is actually tomorrow, and it's an open house, so we're looking to do more public engagement to really vet some of our proposed Unified Development Code text amendments and make sure that we are hearing the public voice and presenting ideas. We have a one-time request that is for five thousand dollars. That request is to provide for the signage of the Capital North Historic District, which was recently put into effect by the National Park Service upon the conclusion and completion of that effort through the Historic Preservation Board and the governing body. That process started in two thousand and nineteen, and just about five months ago, we received notice that it has been approved federally. So we are going to go ahead and relocate signs that we have in the area to other boundaries and then add additional signage. Again, that's a one-time cost of five thousand dollars. The Historic Preservation Board was very excited when they were notified of that line item in the budget. And we continue to decrease our expenses in our budget regarding office supplies. We still have an abundance of office supplies that are just leftover from years of ordering. We don't need to buy paper very often. We don't need to buy scissors and staples and all of those items. So we continue to ratchet that downward as we recognize our actual costs. So that is a budget savings there. We have increased our budget for our Historic Preservation Awards that we just distributed and handed out this month, being Historic Preservation Month. That was an increase of three hundred dollars for the Lickler Jones Award and the DuBois Award. Both of those are solely related to the increased cost of production. We also were asked to increase the budget for fuel, fleet, labor, all of that by two hundred dollars. We don't have much of a choice there. I guess if we have a vehicle, that we have to increase that. That is, that's the highlight of the Planning and Development Budget. Next, I do plan on going over the Downtown Development Authority, but I would be happy to answer any questions on the Planning and Development Department at this time.
No lights on here. Anyone online have any questions? Dr. Aldrich.
President Escobal, through you. I was just curious on the core fee waiver reimbursement. If you can tell us, I know that we had twenty thousand dollars budgeted for that. Can you tell me about what has been utilized or accessed this year to date?
Chair, through you to Councilmember Aldrich. Yes, we have had six thousand, or actually we have six thousand, about three hundred that has been utilized to date. Right now in our department, we are working with the Public Information Officer on consolidating all of our assistance type of programs onto one webpage to bring this into the forefront. This is following up on the recent Council Ordinance Amendment that made this program eligible for historic preservation, for affordable housing, and also for the core fee waivers. So we're trying to continue to get that word out. But we have about sixty three hundred dollars that had been allocated this last year.
As a follow-up, President Escobal.
Go ahead.
I was just curious. So we're right at about, currently at about what we had in two thousand and twenty three, and which was sixty three fifty one. That seems rather odd that we're at the exact, almost sixty, I can't hear them out. Oh.
Chair, I, Chair, through you to Councilman Aldrich, first Aldrich. I will go ahead and double check that. But I do believe that the ones we've had are roughly similar to last, the two thousand and twenty three's year. We had one for MHP, and we also had one for, I believe it was Winters Griffith Architects with their, with their stuff. So I'll go ahead and, and look into that and make sure I get an accurate number to you all.
Thank you.
Councilman Cook or Councilman White?
I'll just go ahead real quick, Mr., Mr. Chair, if I may. Charles, just because you didn't have fancy PowerPoint, doesn't mean that your presentation wasn't, wasn't also first class. And was short and to the point. So, no, I just wanted to, to, to give you positive feedback on that as well. We, we appreciate the, the information that you presided, provide. And I'm, I'm looking forward to the updates you have with, with the, the DDA budget. So, but thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Councilman White.
I don't have any questions at this time. Thanks.
Hey, and then Director Bloom on the North, Capital North Historic District signage. Are those the, the brown and white ones, or do we have the black ones with the carriage on it?
Chair, I have to double check what is out there. I believe they're the brown and white ones that are in the district. We will make sure that the signers that's existing is relocated and that any new signage matches.
Okay. All right, let's go on to DDA.
Chair members of the, the council, the DDA budget is relatively simple on the city side. This is a total of two hundred and nine thousand dollars and, oh, we are on page one seventy four. Sorry, it just follows right afterwards. Um, this one is relatively simple in looking at our funding from last year to this year, it is a, a slight increase. It is being raised to two hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty nine dollars. What we're doing with the budget this year is we are proposing the addition of one half-time employee. That person would work twenty hours a week and they would not have city medical or health benefits. They would just have the required benefits and taxes and liability insurance that we're supposed to carry. That position would result in a pay of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty plus, plus benefits. Presently, we have advertised that, being optimistic that this would be approved. And we have had a great deal of interest from a lot of qualified individuals. This person's role would simply be to provide social media, marketing, and photography services for the downtown. They would work a flexible schedule. They would work weekends, afternoons, evenings. They would really follow around different events and try to interact with the public outside of business hours. With that, that would bring the entire DDA staffing to the DDA Administrator, which is a new position, a new person that came in this year. And we have our present DDA support position right now that is working with the Main Street Program and other DDA duties. I'm open for, and, and I should note that on last, or this last Monday's agenda, the full DDA budget, which was approved by the DDA Board, which is just over one million dollars for fiscal year twenty five, that was introduced and referred to Finance Committee, and that budget will be discussed in more detail at Monday's Finance Committee meeting. I'm open for any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Johnson?
So on your budget line, is division manager, is that the person that's classified as the admin? For your seventy thousand, one thirty eight, that's who that person is? It's just a difference, okay?
Chair, through you to Councilman Johnson. That is correct. That's our administrator position.
Okay, and then looking at your budget, the, for regular employees, that's just one person? Is that correct for forty nine thousand, four forty?
Chair, through you. That is correct. And that had been increased to reflect the salary survey or the salary study that was performed by Human Resources Department. So that brought that position up to a market rate.
Councilman Leiborn.
So this being a very unusual part of our city government, and I'm glad to see it identified as a municipal authority here in your overview. So of the amount that the city puts into it, could you review for me that number?
Chair, through you to Councilman Leiborn. The total amount that the city is putting in, proposed for the two thousand and twenty five budget is two hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty nine dollars. This is a decrease from what most recently has been two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've managed to, we just pay the personnel costs related with the Downtown Development Authority.
And so could you define your responsibilities in addition to the division and regular employees?
Chair, through you to Councilman Leiborn. Pursuant to the Memorandum of Understanding between the DDA Board and the governing body, I serve as the representative and essentially the executive director of the DDA. So I provide oversight of the activities of the DDA and help provide direction to the staff within. The DDA Administrator, that is the one who is tasked with managing the day-to-day and also with ensuring that the goals of the DDA Board are met and, and they are pursued.
And are you compensated for those responsibilities?
Chair, members of the, the council, no. That was just an additional duty that was added on with adoption of that Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you. Anyone online got any questions for Director Bloom on the DDA budget? Dr. Aldrich?
President Escobal, through you. I was just curious, is the regular employee, is that where, is that the Main Street individual that I met who was doing the survey? Is that where that position is? Is that what that position is? I'm guessing that the division manager is Kylie Door, and then the, the regular employee was, I, I'm not really sure how that's all working.
Chair, Chair, through you to Councilman Aldrich. The administrator is Kylie Door, and the Main Street person, the DDA support person, is Irene Parsons.
Okay, thank you.
Director Cook, Councilman Cook or Councilman White? Any questions on DDA?
None for me. Thank you.
No, no, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, with that, tomorrow we'll have our last work session on the budget with City Attorney, Human Resources, IT and Compliance. And then Committee of the Whole will be on May twenty second, and with that, we are adjourned.